I don't need a mic, I've been told that for years or so. I'm Linda Benson and on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Clallum County, welcome to our forum tonight. Thank you for being here. Just a couple of announcements. Don't forget to silence your cellphone, so that doesn't go off in the middle of the night here. And we have bathrooms that are to the right, and obviously, fire exit is straight out. We don't have a full house tonight, so we probably won't have any problems at all. So, welcome. And with that, I will introduce someone who probably doesn't need a lot of introduction, Maureen Turner. She's been a longtime member with the League, and she'll be our moderator tonight.
Okay, thank you, Linda. So, do bet it's nice out. If it's dark and wet and rainy, people might have come indoors, but welcome, all of you. Glad that you're here. And thanks the city of Port Angeles for letting us use this forum, debate place. We have our timers are right in the front row, and they will be holding up the signs, and we'll have them stand up at the end, and so you can meet them. And I urge you, ask you not to video any of this proceedings. Tim Bry is back there making a video recording of the forum, and it will be posted on the League website. Excuse me. So, before we begin, just want to do a quick reminder. I'm sure you all know all about the League, but just to remind you that we're a national, nonpartisan, nonprofit organization, whose purpose is to promote the informed and active participation of citizens in government. Our goal for tonight's forum is to provide you and the rest of the citizens in Clallum County with information to help them be informed and knowledgeable voters. And you'll find more information about the League on the back table, and then also the bottom of your agenda is contact information, if you want to contact us for any reason. And did you all get an agenda? Okay. All right. Excuse me, Bert. So, tonight, we're going to have two panels. One will be Fire District Two, and the other is Port Commission Race. We're going to start out with Fire District Two, and you can see we have two candidates here, all ready to go. And so, excuse me. Fire District Two is governed by three commissioners. They're elected at large. They serve four-year terms.
Six-year.
Yeah. Says four in my script, but they have six-year terms. Okay. It serves the area between Deer Park Road on the east and Lake Crescent on the west, excluding property within the city limits of Port Angeles. Fire District Two also responds to calls in Olympic National Park from Hurricane Ridge to Solduck Hot Springs, and tonight's candidates are running for position number three. In order, we're going to introduce them in the order that they filed for election, and then what you will do is we, the candidates will have three minutes for their opening statement. Then later, when the questions are asked, they'll have one minute to answer, and then they'll also leave an opportunity, one minute for rebuttal comments. If anybody wants to have a written question, you may do that, and it will be presented, but you need to have your name on the card where you write the question. And then, at the end, we'll give the candidates two minutes for closing remarks. So, we're going to have, first will be Keith Cortner, because when he filed for election was first. Oh, and we forgot to tell you, thank you, that if anyone needs a hearing assistance, we have these modif, where are they? These wonderful devices that the city has applied.
I need it.
Okay. And so?
I forgot my hearing aids.
Okay, great. We found something to take it. I'm glad I remembered to do it. Anybody else want to use one? That'd be just great. Okay, we'll wait till you, okay, we'll wait till you get that set up before we start. Linda, when you start, we would like you'd ask, tell us why you're running for the Fire Commission, and what are your qualifications, and then, what do you see as the major issue currently facing Fire District Two, and how would you address it? So, isn't it shocking that we only gave you two or three minutes to do that? So, if there's information you don't get to put into your introductory statement, feel free to kind of fill it in a little later during the question-answer period. Okay, so, all right, I guess she's ready to go. So, we'll start first with Keith Cortner.
Good evening. I'm Keith Cortner. Thank you for being here tonight. Appreciate you having us, and appreciate you coming out. I moved here two years ago, two and a half years ago, from Florida. I'm a retired fire service in Florida, currently working for an emergency management consulting company as a consultant for disaster, disaster response, and business continuity for about 35 countries, 35 businesses around the world. Home Depot would be probably the best one to relate here, as one of our clients. My fire service background, I have 25, 26 years, including several of those as a volunteer. I was a paid firefighter. I was, spent a few years as a fire chief of a volunteer department in Florida. I also worked administration for a county in Florida. In that role, I ran a fire academy. I had a hand in apparatus design and purchasing, station remodels, station, we didn't get any done while I was there, unfortunately, but did station reviews throughout the county for needs assessment type of thing, in far as stations and equipment replacements. I also did training, like I said, I ran the fire academy for the entire county, and recruitment and retention for 12 volunteer fire departments. Before that, I was in business as a manager of a retail store, a retail grocery store. I also had a business of my own, so I do have some budgeting experience and financial experience in that respect, in hiring, and dealing with employees, and that kind of thing, dealing with, dealing with folks like that. My, my goal here is to assist the fire department, and in all honesty, the community, in addressing the needs of the community in many aspects, including station needs, staffing, training, and equipment, all at the same time, while being hopefully fiscally responsible to you as the taxpayer, as, to me, as the taxpayer, and overseeing the budgetary issues that would come with that. I'm running here because I've been part of a community for many years. I was on two other volunteer boards in the past, again, as a volunteer fire department, fire service member, so giving back to the community is what I enjoy. While I was building our house, I didn't get involved, and then once I decided, okay, it's time to get out there and get involved again, I found out that the opportunity to be a commissioner, rather than be a line-level firefighter, was there, so I decided to try that angle, and see what I could do with my, my prior knowledge, outside the area maybe, but my prior knowledge in the fire service and emergency management, to help the community in that respect, rather than go back on the line as a firefighter. Again, thank you for having us here tonight.
Thank you. Okay, and Steve, you're next.
Hi, my name's Steve Hoff. I've been a lot of different things in my lifetime. I've been an operating room tech, licensed practical nurse, medical electronics technician, firefighter, EMT, and in the firefighter roles, I've been firefighter first class on through to chief of this district, of Clallum County Fire District Two. I was the first unified chief for the entire district. I have been wrapped up knee-deep in budget work since I was about 19 years old, and I have enjoyed my time in the fire service, I have enjoyed my time helping the community. I'm, the reason I'm running, there's a couple reasons. Number one is I really love District Two. They, they helped me out so much in my beginning, my professional career. As a volun, I was a volunteer. They showed me what it was, what it meant to be a real firefighter, what it meant to go out and do the job. I was very appreciative of that, and it helped me get hired. And I want to pay that debt back somehow. And I thought about, like Keith, I thought very similar about going back onto the active fire ground, and that's for a much younger man. I'm 64 now, and I really, I really respect what it takes to be a firefighter. I, I just, I feel like I'm being led to be in the administrative side of the house now. So, I've had a lot of different things in my life, though. As a firefighter, I was responsible for about $900,000 worth of budget in the emergency medical supplies, buying new emergency medical equipment. With District Two, I helped them refurbish two different fire engines, and buy a new water tender, the big guy that hauls 3,000 gallons of water out of Whack, and also putting in two new stations, one out at Deer Park and one out at Lake Sutherland, which unfortunately were, they didn't turn out quite the way that I had envisioned, but I had left by that time, and was working full-time with Federal Way. And like Keith, again, I just, I really feel like I want to pay our community back. I want to help. I want to be there. I've also been wrapped up with FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Association, agency, I'll spit that one out in a moment, with Washington State Task Force One. I've been to the Oklahoma City bombing, to New York City, to that disaster, and Hurricane Katrina. And I've, I really found, again, a love of working within the system, working within, how can we make this work together as a big team? And that's what I would like to bring to District Two, is that big-team approach again. And it's been, they've been doing wonderful, and I'd like to continue to grow on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we switch to audience questions, I'd like to ask you each if you could spend one more minute each, and kind of flesh out for us, what does the Fire District do? How many volunteers are there? About how many calls do you get? How are you funded? I mean, just, I know there's a lot of passion around Fire District elections, so help us kind of understand that, if you would. And so, we'll do the reverse. We'll do Steve, and then Keith.
Okay. Part of it, on the call volume, they run anywhere between 800 to 1,200 calls with a group of volunteers, a very dedicated group of volunteers of about 80, and there's about 10 paid professional staff, paramedics, firefighters. We get the funding from property tax. There is a section of your property tax that we're allowed to collect a maximum of $1.50 per thousand. Right now, we're collecting about $1.20 per thousand, if I remember correctly. I was with the lid lift group five years ago, and we successfully passed a lid lift, and I haven't looked at my tax statement in a long time, so that's where we get our funding. And it's a lot of dedication on the volunteer side, to keep doing what they do for the minimum amount that they get. They get a small stipend.
Okay. And Keith?
To add to those numbers, they did about 147 calls last month, I believe, again, with that group of volunteers. It's unique in the area because of the way the district is broke up. I'll kind of expand on, on what Steve said, can't dispute those numbers. Because of the city of, of Port Angeles being in the middle of the district, it kind of makes it a unique area to cover and adequately serve the community. You kind of almost have three sections to the, to the Fire District, I'm sorry, you almost have three sections to the Fire District, so it makes it a little bit unique. That's really all I can say, because he's got all those numbers already there.
Okay. Now, we'll open up for audience questions, and we encourage you to ask your question in a timely, brief way, like within 30 seconds. And then, if it's to a particular candidate, both candidates will still be allowed to answer, and they will give one-minute answers. So, if you can go up to the mic, or if you don't want to go up to the right mic, just raise your hand, they'll bring the mic to you, so.
Don't be afraid.
Maureen Modine. So, do local firefighters have any of the same issues that, like, say, the firefighters that cleaned up the Twin Towers, health effects, or anything like, like that, that you're aware of and want to work on?
Okay. Well, start with Keith this time.
Actually, they do. Cancer is actually becoming the lead fatality for firefighters, rather than, it used to be heart attacks. Everything burns, and everything burns the same as it did 50 or 100 years ago. It's just what is burning. Even this carpet, these, this furniture, this tabletop, all puts off carcinogen gases when it burns. Even with the breathing apparatus and the bunker gear, what we call bunker gear, the outfit that they have on, even the protection that that affords them, things seep through. Gesticular cancer, throat cancer, and lung cancer, like I said, are very, very prevalent in the fire service as a whole around the nation now, around the world, really, now.
Okay.
To build on what Keith just said, indeed, there are a lot of cancer issues, and in fact, in one of the union magazines, they just talked about Washington State passed House Bill 1913, and it increased from three presumptive cancers to nine presumptive cancers to firefighters. I've had a tumor taken out of my head, and now they're talking about maybe that tumor is in the presumptive cancer collection. The doctors are looking into that one. Yeah, it was a small tumor, it was about the size of my thumb. And it didn't affect me too mu, oh, sorry, it didn't affect me too much. But anyway, yes, also respiratory, respiratory issues, heart attacks, cardiovascular disease in general. And some of it's been modified now with better diet, better exercise, but there's still that constant exposure to the byproducts of combustion, and it gets worse every year. So, indeed, where there are issues that we continue to work and build upon, and protect our people more, better gear, better buildings, better ways to do things. I see the stop sign.
Okay. And someone else?
Do you want to say your name first?
My name is Jane Vanderhoof, and I'm just wondering if the fire departments have any sway on, on development? After just hearing what you were just saying about cleaning up places and all the dangers of the chemicals that come out, I'm wondering, they're building down in the, what I consider the tsunami zone in Port Angeles, these two new programs, and I'm just, well, I'm wondering if you have it, if you influence those decisions to be made, or if you're ignored in the decision-making process, if you understand that.
I understand.
Okay. So, this time, we'll start Steve, will answer first.
At the moment, Fire District Two has some input on what's going on with the development around them. It will take more personnel for us to be able to really address that, especially things like in the tsunami zone, or along an earthquake fault area, which we have a couple to deal with, or in tight fire areas. We do have some input, but I would love us to have more during the planning cycle of different buildings.
The fire service role is more of fire prevention and safety, so they're involved in not approval of what's built, or in site preparation necessarily, but access, smoke detectors, you know, that kind of thing, as far as life safety issues, occupancy sizes and ratings, how many chairs you can have in this building, how many doors you have to have, these many chairs, and that type of thing, rather than, than the approval process in and of itself.
Okay.
Say your name first, and I'll hold it for you.
Fred Sullivan. I'm wondering what your opinion is on letting fires burn where there's no danger to people, or burning to clear the underbrush to prevent future fires? Understand my question?
Yes, I do, sir.
Okay. So, Keith, you're first up this time.
Wildland fire, burning, prescribed burns, however you want to turn that, are a good thing. Obviously, it's got to be monitored, and kept under control. Obviously, they need to be kept away from, and smoke conditions need to be monitored for what they're doing to the, to the general area, to the, to the public. But they are a benefit. A lot of the issues they had in California, aside from the power company, where some of that was attributed to unregulated or un, not taking care of what's out there in some respects, that's very difficult to do, so I do not mean that critically at all, because it's very difficult, and you have that many acres, or that, that spans of forest to manage and take care of. But yeah, I do agree with prescribed burns and forest cleaning, if you want to call it that.
Okay. And Keith?
No.
I'm sorry.
Steve.
Okay. We'll get there.
You guys look so much alike.
No, the prescribed burn, I would agree with, and I would hand that over to the Department of Natural Resources. They're the, the big gurus on how that should occur, and they are also the keepers of the wildland firefighting teams. I would really leave that in their court. My concern is when it spills over into the urban wildland interface, and it's your house that's now in line, getting ready to be clobbered by a fire coming at it. I've been to a couple of them over in eastern Washington, around Alta Lake, that we did do a wonderful stop, and kept the houses from burning, and looking at the area, we go back there on a regular basis, my wife and I do, and looking at how well it's greened back up. I'm in favor of proper controlled burns, properly managed, properly permitted by the Department of Natural Resources. To just go out and say, yeah, go ahead and burn, I have some questions about that. I have some real fear about that.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That's a great question, by the way.
Okay. Anyone else out there? Before we go to your closing statements, when you talk about the difficulties of being a firefighter, and what you're exposed to, how do you recruit volunteers? And so, we'll do, excuse me, Steve, you're first.
Okay. Firefighter recruitment in the volunteer group is a lot of having people understand how much they're helping their own community and themselves. A lot of times, the volunteers, it's their house that may be threatened. Sometimes, the volunteers, it may be their loved one that's sick, that needs help. And it's helping pay back to the community that really works with volunteerism. How are we getting, how are we getting those people? A lot of it's just by good word of mouth, by some really wonderful volunteers that we have, that have been with us for 20, 25 years. It's their shining example of what a volunteer is and does that gets us great quality volunteers.
Thank you. And Keith?
Recruitment's tough. Volunteerism today is, is a tough ballgame. It's hard to get folks to, it's hard to get folks that, that have or are willing to spend that amount of time in the fire service. There's a lot of training that goes into it, to be allowed to do firefighting. But typical methods, like Steve alluded to, with the, the friendships amongst the volunteers and their friends, the schools, start them early, get them in there, the signs that you see around the community, I think there's, there's other things that might be able to be done, reaching out to the businesses. I brought this up at one of the other forums, bring, get with the businesses, allowing them to allow people to go to these calls when they, when they need to. Again, they're helping the business and the community as a whole. But it's, it's a tough challenge, and probably will be for a long time, unfortunately. I think the department has done a pretty good job. They have a, I've been to several of the trainings, they have a pretty good core of volunteers right now, so they seem to be doing pretty well with it, at the time.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions out there? Okay. Then we will go to your summary statements, and I will start, since we start with Keith before, we'll start with Steve this time, and you have two minutes for your summary.
Thank you. Once again, thank you for having this forum, letting us talk a little bit about what our passions are. And both Keith and I have a real passion for the fire service, and it's come from years of service, and wanting to pay back to our communities. I have enjoyed being a resident of Clallum County for, I think it's over 55 years now. I took, I was born in Seattle, but I had no control over that. I was brought over here when I was four years old, where my parents, great-grandparents, and great-great-grandparents lived. My dad lived and died four blocks from Stevens Middle School, so he's, you know, I, I understand the community. I understand that feeling, that connection. I did K through 12 here, and two college terms up at Peninsula College. My kids did K through 12 here, and one term at Peninsula College. Then they got smart and went somewhere else and got even more education. Made Dad look a little silly, so that's okay, though. But there's just a real passion in what we do, and if I should not make this term, I will run again in two years, when the next commissioner will come up for reelection. And I want to be part of the board. I want to be part of this fire service here in Clallum County. And if I should not get elected, I will also be attending an awful lot of the commissioners' meeting, just so I can be up to speed when it's my turn. So, that's, that's what my passion is, that's where my heart lies, and I really want that chance to pay back the community, that huge debt that I got from them, learning how to be a firefighter, learning about all the great things wrapped up in the fire service, and giving me a 30-some-odd-year career of being a firefighter, as well as a 30-year career of being a volunteer firefighter.
Thank you. And Keith?
Well, first, thanks again for having us here tonight, and thank you for coming out to listen to us. I'm not from the area, but I have been in the fire service for a long time. I think I have a broad range of experience in the fire service and in business that will do well, and serve you and the, and the board well, if I get elected. I believe in objective, factual assessments, meaning I believe that we have a third party, not just the commission, or not just the fire chief, do an assessment of the community and see what the assessment needs are, and that includes input from the community, as far as stations and staffing and that kind of thing. But we must have a, a goal of fiscal responsibility in that at the same time, so that we're putting those resources where they need to be at the right time over the next several years, incorporating a vision plan, a vision statement and a vision plan, a five or 10-year goal down the road in that. Again, I think I have a broad range of experience, and have had a hand in doing several of those things in the past, even though I'm not from this area, the fire service is the fire service. Business is business. I think I can, I can serve well and offer a fresh perspective to the commission and the community. Again, thanks for having us here tonight. Appreciate it.
Okay. And I want to thank you both for coming, and for running. It's, I think, such a great thing for democracy, when there's at least two candidates for every office, so people have a choice, even though it's probably easy to run when you're not challenged. But I also want to thank you for sharing and helping us understand more what a Fire District is. So, give applause to our candidates. And we'll take just a five-minute break while these candidates depart, or if you want to, if you want to stay around, then people can have conversations with you afterwards. And then, have our two Port Commission candidates come up. Thank you.
Thank you, Bert.
Thank you.
So, thank you. So, our next panel, our candidate's running for District Three Commissioner of the Port of Port Angeles. The port covers all of Clallum County, and the three Port Commissioners are elected by district and the primary, and at large in the general. District Three is the western part of the county, starting with West Port Angeles, and going on out to Forks, et cetera. The commissioners serve a four-year term. As with the previous candidates, the introductory comment will be three minutes, and they will tell us why they're running, and their qualifications, and what they see as the major issues for the port. And they will speak according to the order in which they filed. And then, the audience rules will be the same, ask your questions, limited to 30 seconds. So, we'll move right into our presentations, and Connie, you're up first.
Good evening. I'm Connie Boffe. I am the incumbent Port Commissioner. Thank you once again so much to the League for putting on these forums. I know there's not many people in attendance, but I know that they will be watching the, the recorded video afterward. So, thank you again for providing this forum for us to, to speak. I, I have been the incumbent now for four years, and, and rather than going into a lengthy background right now, I'm, I'm going to tell you why I ran last time, and why I'm running this time, and what I've accomplished in between. So, last time I ran, I really wanted to, to help the port be more, way more open and transparent in its governance. transparent in its governance. And I will say that we accomplished that. Nine months after I took the oath of office, we received a statewide key award. It's an award that's given out to one party each year, and it was awarded to the Port of Port Angeles at that time. It was the three commissioners that, that we have right now, and, and it was the key award, and it was for our open and transparent governance. I'm, I'm very proud of that. We brought the port out of the dark, and we've really changed the face. We've really opened the port to the public, and just with our maritime festival and doing tours. If you haven't done that yet, you really need to do it. There's really some exciting history about our port, and we also have done an airport appreciation day. But I said that I would work to create job opportunities by building the Composite Recycling Technology Center. That is done. Demanding that the State Department of Natural Resources establish a sustainable public timber supply to support our forest products industry. That is an everlasting battle, and I work very hard at it. Solving the Lincoln Park tree obstruction, if you haven't heard of that issue, we have gotten a temporary fix for that, and that is an emergency resolution to, to cut the trees that are just, just shy of entering the airspace. So that has been a huge safety issue, and we work toward that. I said I would work for environmental stewardship by completing the environmental renovation of the Pen Pley site as quickly as possible. That is done, and we've completed stage one of our Marine Trades Industrial Park. There, there are some other things, but before I run out of town time, I want to say that I think that the biggest issue facing the port right now is diversification. The timber industry and the logs that go through the log yard and across our terminals have been the bread and butter for the Port of Port Angeles and many other ports since 1923. And that is really a cyclic market, and right now we're in a downturn, and there's kind of been a perfect storm, which just further emphasizes why it's so important to diversify. Thank you.
Thank you. And Maury?
Likewise, thank you to the League for holding this forum. My name is Maury Modine, I live in Beaver, Washington. I'm running for this office because I also think the port needs to, to diversify and bring some ecological jobs to the whole county. The port says it's the economic driver for the whole county, but basically all it serves is a little area in Port Angeles. Everybody in the county pays our taxes to the port, but not everybody in the county is served by it. I was a trustee in the village of Magdalena, New Mexico. That's my government experience. It operates very similarly to the port, where the village has an agenda. The commissioners decide if they want the village to go with that agenda or move into a different direction. I thought I did a really good job there. I'm also a member of local union 412. I was a recording secretary for 11 years. Every year we had to go to the legislature and lobby to fight right-to-work laws and also to keep the uniform building codes in place instead of the weaker international building codes. So, so we moved to Beaver seven or eight years ago. I had the hopes that we could fix up the house we were in and maybe go to work at the log mill across the street from my house. Couple of years later, two mills were gone, mostly because a Canadian corporation bought the mills, and they did it on purpose so they could shut them down, so they could start manufacturing finished wood in Canada. I don't know how much longer the Interfor plant here in Port Angeles is going to be here, but I really think that the port needs to look at something else besides just airplanes, fixing boats, and, and stacking logs and sending half of them to China, which is one of our economic competitors. So, how much longer do I have? So, so Magdalena was a really tough place. You had Apache Indians that hated the Navajos, that hated the Spaniards, there were still real Spaniards living in Magdalena, who basically hated the American Mexicans, who, everybody hated the whites because we came in and were fixing up all the properties. And it was a really tough place to negotiate with all these different people and get them all on the same page. And, thank you.
Okay. Before we open it up, I'd like if each one of you could just take a minute and give a, talk about your big vision, a priority of one or two things you'd like to specifically see happen during your term. And so we'll start with you, Maury.
Well, I'd like to see, to see the CRTC expand. Great job with change to quarters, that they're going to build some houses, houses for our homeless vets. I'd also like to see the port start bringing in environmental companies, their synthetic biology corporations that the big guns have, like Branson, and a lot of the rich people, they've been funding these startup companies, and, and they have like little creatures that can eat CO2, and when they die, they're basically fertilizer for fish or farmers. They have some that you can put in the water that can change the composite basics of PCBs and other hazardous chemicals. There's companies in Canada that...
Thank you. Okay, and Connie?
That's, thank you for asking that. We stood up the CRTC, the Composite Recycling Technology Center, to take a, a material that was being thrown away, taken to, you know, to a dump, and treated as a hazardous material. And we stood that business up, and turned it into a nonprofit, basically for research and development and to spin off other jobs. And I know that there was an article in the paper on thermally-modified hemlock and making CLT with it. And what it is, it's not putting the actual carbon fibers into the wood, it's putting boards, lining boards up and then, and cutting tracks in them, and then setting this in as the sandwiching layer. And so we're using an underutilized species of tree, and we're using a throwaway product. CRTC is also working on a number of other products. They make prosthetic braces with this carbon fiber. They're also working...
Ask the question again for more. Okay? Minute is not long. Yeah, no, it's not long. Okay, questions from the audience?
My name's Brian Hunter, resident, property owner, also a candidate for the Charter Review Commission. Actually, I have a bunch of questions, but I'm only going to ask one because I'm sure there's the rest of this inspiring crowd. I'll talk quicker. First one is, as a resident here, the failure to have a commercial air carrier at the airport is a failure for us. What will you do to change that?
Okay, yes, you are. Okay. Yes, Connie, you're first.
I remember flying flights when I came in. It was wonderful to be able to do that. The downfall to the commercial air service was when Horizon decided to go to the caravan plane, which was a 32-seat plane, and we could not fill all the seats. And so unless you have at least 60% capacity filled on the plane, and it's not just going out, it's the backfill part two that was coming back empty, they could not make it pencil out. And until a business can make it pencil, we won't have an airline. But we're looking, we're looking to other entities and, and to the city and the county, all the cities in the county to, to help guarantee that we can fill a plane for at least 60% capacity. We are right now working with a new airline who has just started a new flight between Boeing and Friday Harbor, and we're trying to get them to, they have to change, they've got a 135 permit right now, and we're, they're trying to get it expanded so that they can fly a plane over here. But until we can get people to pay at least $150 a ticket, we won't have air service.
Okay, thank you. And Maury, you're next.
So think outside the box. The main problem with airlines in the country today is that there's not enough pilots. Maybe we could start a pilot school here, and then there's companies sort of like Uber in Los Angeles that could maybe come up here if we had the pilots, and they could do the additional training to teach them how to fly in their little jets. Way out of the box, Clallam County is a transit authority. No transit authorities in the country have an air service, but maybe if Clallam County teamed up with Seattle, we could create some kind of a transit to at least go from Port Angeles to Seattle, where you could get to the airport.
I, I was going to say, if you'd like rebuttal time, since we can have one minute each, so go ahead.
Believe me, we have tried all those options. We've looked at having a pilot school here, we've looked at having parts businesses here to repair airplanes, to try to encourage pilots to come over, and when they bring their plane, hopefully when they leave, they can take passengers with them. We've worked closely with the Port of Seattle. They said that if we could get a plane service in, that they would give us free landing fees and try to make it easier to go through TSA. We're trying everything we can, we're leaving no stone unturned. We want this as much as the public wants it. And I'm hoping, it's my hope, that once the mill gets going and, and, you know, we, we have another 200 workers there, that that's going to be what puts us over the top for the number of passengers that we need to fill a plane.
Okay, Maury, would you like one minute?
I would, I would just try again. I would continue trying. I've, I've listened to the last three years of port commission meetings, and I haven't heard them say anything about trying public transit. I do know they're working on the airline that she's talking about, this doing the small flights now. But I would just, I would just do everything I could to encourage the port staff to continue their job at trying to get air, air, air service.
Okay, thank you. Another question?
Linda Benson, I'm from Squim. I'm hoping that you will each share your vision for John Wayne Marina.
Okay, Maury, you're first.
So my vision is that it never gets sold to a private entity. There's, there's rumors now that Squim might be looking at taking it over again, but I would never sell it to a private entity because I just don't think that's right. They could build, they could like industrialize the whole little coastline there, and it's such a beautiful place that it doesn't need to happen. One of the reasons the port contemplated selling it is because they say it doesn't make any money, or doesn't make enough money to replace itself. But right now, if it wasn't for the two marinas and some of the rental property that the port owns, the port would be even more than almost $2.5 million below budget this year. They're, they're struggling, and so, so my answer is I would never sell it to a private entity.
Okay, Connie?
John Wayne Marina is the gem of the county. I do not want to see that change. My concern, the concern of the other commissioners, is how do we replace those floats and those piers in the future? Having, having the marina in, in a, in a public venue like the port, the commissioners have always had to put up with a lot of political pressure to keep the rates as low as possible. So, you know, if you look at the rate of depreciation and, and what we need to replace it, as well as operations, and that is what we are heading toward, trying to get the fees to, to meet those obligations, it will just be a rich man's marina. And personally, for me, I, I want it to stay public and for everybody to be able to afford to use it. So December 10th, when we have, hopefully, some concepts put on the table, we will look at them. Does that mean that we're looking at selling the marina? No. Does it mean that we're going to keep it? It could very well end up that we keep it, because one of the things that has to happen is we need to know, if anybody is going to look to take care of that entity in the future, how they're going to replace the floats and the, and the piles. That's the big question.
Thank you. Maury, you want to do rebuttal?
I, I called some places that do repairs and build brand-new floats, and, and they said that there's a possibility in 10 to 15 years that they could have a way to just put an undercoating underneath docks and wharfs, and they wouldn't have to completely replace everything. Right now, in, in the budget, the port's getting ready to spend millions of dollars on the marina right here in PA, and they're not talking about selling it to a pri, or talking about selling it because they don't want to do the repairs there. So I don't think they should even be talking about selling the John Wayne Marina right now.
Okay, Connie?
So the work that's going to happen at the boat haven is very necessary work for the parking lot. We need to get it taken care of, and the longer we wait to do it, the more it's going to cost to take care of it. With John Wayne Marina, let me see, what do I want to say about it? Because I, I think I've kind of finished my thoughts. None of us want to see it leave the hands of the port. We'd like for it to stay the way it is. There are 300 slips there, 288 of them are occupied, 197 of the, of the floats have people who are using the mortgage have Squim addresses. It's 65% of the tenants live in Squim, the rest live out of the county. So we're looking at spending $17 million for 190, what did I say, 197 Squim living tenants. So we have to look at as to act the best use of spending money.
Thank you. We're ready for another question?
Hi, I'm Steve Hoppe. Again, the question is, what's going to happen to the old Rainier Mill Site, and what's the port's vision for that area?
Thank you. And Connie, you're first this time?
Thank you, that's always a great question. And I think it was last night, yes, last night, and I had another obligation, because I really wanted to go down and hear what Department of Ecology was saying about the, the plan for the cleanup of Rainier. Now, the port has absolutely nothing to do with that area because it's owned by a private company, a private individual. So we have no voice, we have no say, just like the members of the public don't, because it's, it's owned by them. I do know that if it were available to be for sale, I know that there's at least one tribe who would like to take it over. There's been talk in the past of, "Oh, we need to have a mall out there," and all that. I don't see that happening. In fact, I know that in the preferred alternative, in their volumes of paper that they have for the remediation, that finger sticking out there will be removed.
Okay, Maury?
I don't have anything to add to that, but I would, I would make the port's facilities available if they needed someplace to dock a boat or something to take care of that.
We will absolutely, absolutely do that. Not only do we work with people who need to do some kind of mortgage, we'll be working with McKinley, too, hopefully on a barging plan. McKinley is an, is an interesting entity. They have contracts to make cardboard boxes, and they don't want to use any virgin material to do it. They want to simply recycle paper. And so we're working with them to try to get their raw material barged in that they need for their operation and to help them barge it back out. So we're, whenever Coast Guard has an operation, we're always there. The Cable Innovator, that is usually based over in Victoria, comes over here, and we are able to... are able to provide electricity for them so that they can shut their engines off, which really helps with the, with the emissions, so.
Okay. Maury, do you have any more comments?
Well, a little bit different, a little bit different subject, but Connie brought up the marine trades area. I have a big concern that where they've been putting dredging materials for years, they want to pile drive through the dredging materials and build their buildings on top of the pylons. If there's a small earthquake, the dredging material's going to turn into liquid quicksand, and we could lose all of the investment that we put into that area right there. I'm an industrial pipe fitter. I worked on a place in Mescalero, New Mexico, where they built a building on pylons, the engineers approved everything. They had a small earthquake, and a year later, the casino hotel motel, it was a huge complex, started sinking. So they had to spend tons of money to go in and reinforce the bases and, and add more pylons to stop the building from being a total waste.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
I have a question. I think I can do it from here, Barbara. No.
No, for that, beyond the recording, you'll need to use the mic.
Okay. Okay. My name is Mary Doherty, and I have what might be a very naive question. I have wondered, since I came back to my hometown, if the port is involved in collecting any kind of fees, and how much and what are, you know, to what extent, for ships that moor in the harbor for days while they wait to get permission to go on?
Okay. So Maury, you're up first. Did you get the question?
Yeah, the, the ships pay for mortgage, and I, and I should make a correction, the mortgage part of the port is actually making money right now also. But I'm not quite sure what you were...
That helps. Thank you. How much do they, and how do you assess that?
Are you, you're talking about the ships that are not moored at a dock, but they're out in the middle of the harbor?
Right, that are parked there temporarily. And what benefit do, does the county gain from that?
Okay. So did you get the question, Maury? They're talking about the ships that just sit out there, wait, waiting to go somewhere else.
I didn't bring the budget with me so I could look at the number and tell you that number. I'm sure Connie knows it.
I do, it's zero. Because our, we don't go out that far. Where those ships moor is all federal water and is all controlled at a federal level. We have no say in who parks out there, just like when the oil drilling rig came in, that was moored in the federal waters. We had no say over whether or not it could come in or not come in. So we don't get, our county doesn't get, our port doesn't get any fees for that mortgage, but it does help some of the businesses, like Jack Harmon's business, who he's, he has a pilot boat business, and he's all over Puget Sound, but he stays here most of the time. And he runs the red and white boat out to the ships to deliver supplies and, and pick up passengers to bring them back. But, so it's benefiting some of our businesses, but we don't get any, any kind of revenue from it.
Okay. Is there anyone who hasn't asked a question who would like to ask? Seeing no one, if you, anyone who has already asked a question, if you want to ask a second one, you're welcome to do that.
Yeah, a long line at this point.
Okay. So seeing no additional questions, we'll move to our closing statements, and they will be two minutes, and we'll do it in reverse order. So Maury, you're going to be first with your closing statement.
Okay. So again, thank you for inviting us. Another issue that's coming up on the port is they've been banking tax increases for years, and I'm pretty sure that they're going to vote to increase the total taxes that the port takes in by about $60,000 a year, which isn't very much for a household in Clallum County. But the port always tries to say that they're self-sustaining, and they use the $1.6 or $1.7 million that the taxpayers give them every year to help them pay bonds and, and other things, and then they pretend like it's not taxpayer money funding the port. I, I have problems with airborne ECS, where a company came in, a Delaware company, sold, sold a good program to the port, took one commissioner and one of the directors at the port onto their board of directors. The port spent almost $1 million fixing up a building for this company. They couldn't get any contracts, everything failed, and a lot of the people who are in office around town all believed that it was just part of a scheme to, to extract money from people. And it's like, sure, the, the port has an award for being open, but that whole issue disappeared in an, in an executive session. And I, I would, as a commissioner, I would try to be more open to the public and let them know where all of our taxpayer dollars are going. And I look forward to your vote if you so choose. Thank you.
I'll take a couple of seconds of my time to say that it's unfortunate that airborne ECS left. It is unfortunate that the manager was not a businessperson. He's a great developer, he makes great products, and it was actually Raytheon bought him out. He does, he did have contracts. We did not send any employees to, to sit on their board. He hired them as employees, as financial, a financial person and a marketing person. And the money that was put into that building, guess what? The port still owns that building. We still have that asset. So we did not lose anything. In fact, we, we did gain well over a quarter of a million dollars for an early buyout of, by him to get out of that lease. So we did not lose on that, and nothing was hidden. I will go on to say that 31 years ago, my husband and I bought 34 acres out in the Joyce area, and we have an alpaca farm out there. For the past 11 years, I've managed one of the largest nonprofit water systems in the state of Washington. I just resigned after sitting on the county planning commission for eight years. I was elected to and served on the last Charter Review Commission. I'm a member of many organizations. I've worked in the public arena, I've worked in, for private and nonprofit sectors, and owned my own businesses. My four years as a port commissioner have shown my dedication, competence, and commitment to the port and its mission by the decisions that I've made. I've been a strong advocate for and will continue to work to diversify and strengthen the port's lines of business by developing the Marine Trades Industrial Park, and developing value-added wood products, and developing a workforce. I thank you in advance for your vote and for your confidence. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, I'll, I'll say the same thing, that thank you both for running. It's always nice to give the voters a choice, and I am always amazed that people are willing to sign up and be a candidate. So thank you for coming and for running. So I also want to give a thank you to Elaine and Julie as our timers, and Tim Bry back there, who's doing our video for us. And to let you know, there are more forums coming up, so grab your neighbor and put it on your calendar. Wednesday, October 2nd, here in City Hall again, we'll have candidates for the Port Angeles School Board and Olympic Medical Center Physicians 1 and 2. Sunday, October the 8th, 6th, get my glasses, make sure it's a 6, not an 8, yes, it is. Sunday, October 6th, the Council Chamber is in Squim, starting at 2 o'clock. They will have the Fire District 3 Commissioners, the Squim School Board, and the County Commissioner race for District 1. And on October the 8th, at 6 o'clock, we'll be back here in the City Hall, and we'll have candidates for Port Angeles City Council on the first panel, and speakers for and against the Affordable Housing Measure. We have flyers for that information in case that was more dates and times than you can remember, but it's on the website. Remember that Washington State, you can now register to vote up to and on Election Day in case you have kids who are turning 18, or neighbors that forgot to register. You can go to votewa.gov to verify your voter registration, make sure it's up to date. Ballots will be mailed October the 16th and must be postmarked or dropped in the box by November 5th. Please remember to register to vote if you haven't done so. And I thank you again all for coming, and thank our candidates. And I see our Fire District candidates are still here, so if you want to have a personal conversation with either our two candidates here or our Fire District, please feel free to do that. And I think...
Any other candidates?
Oh, yes. Okay, it's on my script, I'm about to read it. Are there other candidates in the audience that would like to stand up and introduce themselves as to what they're running for? I do see some charter candidates out there.
I'm Jane Vanderhoof, and I live in Port Angeles, and I'm running for the Charter Review Commission in District 2.
I'm still Mary Doherty, and I came particularly tonight to say that I was very interested and compelled to run for the Charter Review. Long before I knew I was going to do that, I committed to care for my grandchildren in Pennsylvania for the first half of October. So tonight's the last time I can say that I'm interested in the public's support, but I also think it's just such an important thing that we figure out the best structure for moving forward and the voice of all the people in doing that. And that's what I think the Charter allows us. Thank you.
And Rick, back here, aren't you a charter candidate?
Have I changed my name again?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Hi, I'm Brian Hunter.
Brian Hunter. I know how you got to be, Rick.
Very comfortable to be in here because I was a planning commissioner for the city for a number of years. Before that, I was the stormwater runoff planner for the state of Hawaii for over 10 years, and then a planning director for a city of 170,000 people. So essentially, a process and policy expert after 30-some years in government. Right now, of course, I'm happily unemployed, and obviously I've already given my time and energy to the, the county by way of planning commission. It's something I look forward to, hope that myself and our other candidates that are here all get placed, because I've listened to them for the last couple of months, and all of us are, seem very dedicated for absolutely no reason except of, except for our own goodwill. Thank you.
Thank you. And on your way out, we do have an evaluation forum. If you'd be kind enough to fill it out, let us know how we can make these forums user-friendly and how we can encourage more people to come. So again, thank you all for coming, and thank you for the, to the candidates, and I think we're stand adjourned.